Shh.
So we'll see.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Is that one broken?
This one's not broken, it looks like it's scratching itself.
The fire.
Yeah.
I know, right? I put this one in there.
Hmm?
And it got chipped some down, so I don't know how that happened.
Oh, no.
That would be a good bird.
Yeah, why is it just now?
It was just when I put it in the bag, it wouldn't.
Well, I know.
Wouldn't, I know, right? Oh, well, you can't have niceness.
Okay.
Okay, so.
That's what can be done.
Does that ring a bell, number?
Can't have nice things.
Glory waters, are you listening?
That's right.
In Sandy's lap?
Well, no, we're not. Yeah, we all have one of those.
Do you?
Oh. Okay.
Wait, this candy.
I'm done with that section.
You can throw it back to you.
No.
Waiting to get you some sticks.
Oh, no. I could do that.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Would you plan, please stand and join us for the pledge allegiance, remain standing for the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Wilson?
Heavenly Father, for the gift of life today, in this beautiful city, we're grateful. We ask for our guidance, clarity, understanding, and wisdom for this council and our constituents. In the name of our Lord Jesus, amen.
Calls are ordered, our February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two council meeting. This time we'll have consideration to approve the agenda. I know one change, we have a consent, uh, 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 agenda item A. Uh, we need to move that to old business, there was a slight change to that. We'll move that to item A and consent agenda to item E on old business. Other, uh, Mr. Peppers?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I need to request a new business item for the appointment of an interim city clerk uh, in a temporary nature.
Okay, well, new business F, um, appointment interim city clerk. Temporary basis, okay. And Mr. Dyer?
Yes, Mayor, we, um, need to add as a new business item, uh, discussion and possible action on a resolution to request, uh, local legislation be adopted, uh, to enact a new charter.
Okay.
Based on the changes that we had made last year and the things we had talked about.
Okay, I'm not gonna write all that down, but I'll. I'll plumb you when we get there.
Discussion of new charter.
Okay. Okay. Noted those three changes, any, any others or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of the motion to approve as amended, uh, say aye?
Aye.
Posed?
All members voted for a motion.
Uh, we have no guests and visitors here tonight, formally at least, so, um, we'll move on to the minutes. You have in your packet the council meeting draft minutes from February third, twenty twenty-two. We have any changes, revisions, edits, or motions?
Motion to approve the minutes?
A motion to approve in a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed, say nay. All members voted for the motion. No informational items this evening, any announcements? Ten minute public input, we have one citizen, Mr. Thomas Weaver. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Thomas Weaver, I reside at one thirty-one Old Marietta Road here in Canton. Thank you for recognizing me to speak, Mayor. It's so good to be back. Uh, recently, though, over dinner, I was paying attention to some of the news from headlines on different major media outlets on major channels, and I noticed that governments all across the United States, some large, some small, and some just like ours, uh, a lot of the coronavirus mandates are starting to be rescinded. And even though it is true that all the chairs here have been put back together and all members of elected and senior executive membership are all seated together and things here have returned back to normal, there's a sense of normalcy in town, there are still some remaining remnants of, uh, the coronavirus pandemic, uh, concerns that linger. For example, meetings are still being held virtually if they're not council meetings. Uh, for example, there's still some signage on the door over at the, uh, Police Department Public Safety Complex. There, there's just some lingering vestiges of that, and I would ask the city to consider if it should be appropriate at some point in the future, maybe in the spring or summer when the weather starts to warm up. Maybe, uh, the city could transition back into normalcy and perhaps, if it should be council's will, to kind of remove some of these lingering vestiges and, and let us all return to, to normal. Um, that's just a ask of mine, but hopefully it's something that yourselves would like to consider at some point in the future if and when appropriate.
Ms. Weaver? We'll move into consent agenda, and since we had a slight revision to that, I will briefly read the remaining three items, just so we're all clear on that. Uh, uh, the remaining items on the consent agenda is approval of agreement with HGR to study Etowah River Corridor, approval of contract with Delta Municipal Professional Service for advanced metering infrastructure system, and approval of fiscal year end twenty twenty-one budget amendments. If anyone would like any of those amend, uh, any one of those, uh, items removed for further discussion?
Are you removing item A?
Yes, we already moved that, uh, and the agenda changed, so. Have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion approved in a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed, nay? All members voted for the motion. Move into old business, item A, discussion and possible action on rezoning and master plan approval request from Rob Beecham to, for thirty-three point two-three acres along Dr. John T. Pettit Longview and Cherokee Street for development of one hundred and twenty-four residential unit subdivision. Mr. Green?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, as you just stated, this is a request for a rezoning and a master plan amendment for, uh, Cherokee Street, Longview Street, and Dr. John T. Pettit. Late yesterday, Mr. Beecham emailed me, uh, some comments on the staff report and his site plan, I forwarded them to you, also placed them in front of your chairs this evening. Mr. Beecham has also done a three-D graphic as to what the development might look like, and I also placed that in front of your chairs, uh, this evening.
Okay.
If you have any questions on the application, of, of course, I'd be glad to try to answer them, Mr. Beecham is here. If there's anything that, um, I cannot answer, or Mr. Patton, uh, maybe Mr. Beecham could provide, could provide that information.
Okay. Great, so we will open this up for discussion, uh, I will say if there, uh, this council would like to take any action on, uh, either both these cases that would be, uh, need to take the form in separate motions, one for the rezoning and one for the master plan approval, so.
Yes.
We can discuss them together, but if we do take action, so.
Yes, the staff did recommend approval of the rezoning and the master plan to be tabled for a length of time that, uh, you may feel would be necessary to give the staff, uh, a, a chance to meet with Mr. Beecham to get a better understanding of his development proposals, such as the low-impact development of the porous pavers, how he would treat the, uh, gray water, and then matters such as that. And then, once it comes back, if it is tabled, um, we can, um, have a better idea of recommended conditions for the master plan.
Ms. Green? Questions, comments?
All right, I think that, uh, we're talking about, it's open for discussion here, right?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. We've got, um, there's no question that the zoning is, I think in my mind, there's no question that zoning is appropriate. I do have some concerns about the master plan from the notes we've gotten back from staff, uh, specifically from, um, Mr. Hatton and then Mr. Kula. What their applicant's asking for, seeing certainly does not fit our current codes. I'd like the opportunity for staff to look at that a little bit more. I do think that more housing in town and zoning is appropriate request, but I'm gonna agree with staff on this to table. The, um, table of the master plan is our limit, we can table for sixty days or ninety days, sorry, at the outside. I can't remember at all.
I think it's sixty.
Sixty?
No, it could go beyond that if the applicant agrees.
If agrees, very good, so, um, I'll start with a motion to approve the zoning request.
Okay. A motion to approve the rezoning? In a second? Further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Tolan?
So, uh, agree with Mr. Carlin, I think it's an appropriate, uh, zoning request change for the city of Canton. Very bullish on adding additional housing stock to our city and, uh, what the applicant is proposing is certainly in line with some of the needs that have been identified, uh, that Canton has, so very much in favor of the rezoning, and I also have several questions, and I'm, you know, always tend to lean on staff when it comes to the finer details and continue to do that with this case, so uh, just wanted to make those points as it relates to both the zoning and the master plan amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Tolan.
I certainly concur that the, the zoning and the request for residential is, is certainly in order, it is in a residential, uh, area that lies between two residential neighborhoods, uh, it's a beautiful site, and, and certainly, I think, appropriate for high-quality homes, which is, I think, is what's being proposed, so it really is the, you know, the devil's in the details on the, on the master plan, especially when we're considering something new, uh, sustainable development, which is a tenant in our roadmap, I think at the last meeting, um, so I think if council does decide to approve the rezoning, table the master plan to allow us, uh, to explore some of those, uh, uh, new methodologies a little bit further, it's an opportunity for us all to learn something and, and hopefully some, you know, new technologies and sustainable development practices we can apply to, to, uh, developments going forward, so I look at it as an opportunity, so, but.
Further questions, comments? If not, we have a motion on the table to approve the rezoning in a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed? All members voted for the motion. Any discussion on the master plan, any further discussion with that, Ms. McGrew?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I personally would like to see this master plan postponed for ninety days with the approval of the applicant. Give them plenty.
Can I jump in? It is three months.
Three months.
The city council can do it for three months.
Okay. And not to, uh, beleaguer the, the applicant, uh, to cause them, uh, to wait longer, but to make sure that we get enough details to know that this is, um, all the sustainable efforts will work, uh, because you know that sustainability is a, uh, something that I am bullish on. If the motion, uh, is made, it would be, um, I'd be in favor of having an inclusion of if the staff is satisfied with answers to the questions, that the applicant could bring the proposal back to us before the ninety days has expired.
That's acceptable, certainly.
I'm sorry?
Yes, ma'am, I would agree with that.
Just a, for clarification, so the ordinance says city council can extend it up to three months. After that, the, the applicant can ask for more time, subject to approval of the council.
Okay.
It's technically right.
How will our three months work out? I don't want us to end up with three months and not be at, not be at a council meeting.
The intent was meeting months.
Right. Oh, was it?
The month, the, the meeting that's three months from now, so the second meeting.
So not ninety days.
In May, okay.
And it's, uh, Bobby, the wording is up to?
Yes.
Okay, so it could, we could decide prior to that.
If you condition the motion.
Right.
Oh, you can always come, yeah, you can always take it up anytime you want.
Okay.
It's just tabled until then, but you could put it on agenda and.
Got it, thank you.
Then I would make a motion to move to table the master plan amendment for a period of, uh, or till the second meeting in May, with the condition that it can be resubmitted, um, uh, by the applicant, in the meantime, does that cover your question?
Yes, thank you.
Very good.
Second.
A motion to table the master plan approval for ninety days, uh, or, uh, to the second, uh, meeting in May, unless, uh, there's prior, uh, consent and agreement with, uh, staff that these, uh, these issues have been addressed. Can we have a second? Any further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed, say nay? All members voted for the motion. So item B, we have discussion and possible action on rezoning requests from Rob Beecham for point seven-seven acres along West Marietta Connector, West Marietta, East Marietta, and Railroad Streets for the construction of ten single-family detached homes. Mr. Green?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, just as you said, this is a request for ten single-family detached homes on point seven-seven acres. Um, the staff has recommended approval of this with, I believe it was four conditions. One of those I would like to rescind, which was the front yard setback being increased to fifteen feet. Uh, my initial concern was cars being parked on the driveway with just a ten-foot setback, they would have the rears of the cars or the front, if you back then, overhanging the sidewalk. Um, the applicant's proposal is to have a common alleyway that would go in between five and five of the houses, or however it's approved, so the houses will be accessed, uh, up from the back side of the house, so I would concur with the applicant's request for the ten-foot front yard setback and would rescind that suggested condition from staff that it be fifteen.
Okay. And, uh, so the other three conditions, uh, would be the corner side yard setback shall be fifteen feet. The side yard, uh, setback shall be five feet or ten feet between structures as approved by the Fire Safety Services Manager. And then the third one, the development shall be limited to no more than eight single-family detached living units resulting in a density of ten, um, duplexes for eight, per acre. This would allow for a comparable density to the River Mill Village Development just to the north along West Marietta Street. Is that correct, Mr. Green?
Yes.
Okay.
With the exception that these are not duplexes, they are single-family detached.
Okay. So it's density of ten?
A DU is a dwelling unit.
Okay, okay, thank you. Questions, comments?
I'll weigh in again. This requires, is this another zoning and then also a master plan, or is it just the master plan at this point?
This is, uh.
No, sir.
Because it's already zoned to the central district business.
This is just a rezoning.
Just the zoning, not the master.
Yeah, the single family, so.
Make sure we get all the hard ducks in a row. All right. Now, do we have, with the revision of the front yard setback, do we just have three conditions, or is it?
Three, just the three.
Just those three? The side yards?
Side yard.
The corner and eight units?
Two, three, and four in the report.
Got it. Two, three, and four.
We were moving item one in the staff report, so.
Got you. Of course, discussion goes, I think that's reasonable. Anybody else has a thought on it?
Yeah, I mean, I think, uh, I think having the same density as the, uh, previously approved, uh, townhome development just, uh, just to the north along West Marietta Street certainly makes sense, um, keeping that the same. Uh, there were some concerns too about site distance there in the, that ninety-degree, uh, turn, and I think that going from ten to eight, I think, would help alleviate some of that as well, so.
I agree.
In my opinion.
I would agree with that. Then I'll make a motion to approve the zoning request with the conditions two, three, and four from the staff report. Which will be the, if they need to be stated again, I can state them again, but those three?
The mayor already read them out, so.
Yeah, so, very good.
Second.
Okay.
With a question.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve, uh, with the three conditions that were stated earlier, uh, items two, three, and four in the staff report, in a second, and further questions and comments, Mr. Tolan?
I'm not sure that I've heard price points, do we know what price points are on these eight units?
I believe they were in the six hundred thousands.
Six, okay. I'm sure it was mentioned, I just missed it, thank you.
Any further questions, comments? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed, say nay? All members voted for the motion. Item C, discussion and possible action on Heritage Park Playground Contract. Mr. Dodson, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, um, asking tonight that you, um, with y'all's approval, accept the new rendering and contract for the, uh, Heritage Park Playground project? And if there's any questions or concerns about the new renderings and contract, I'll try to answer them the best I can.
Yes, and thank you, um, Mr. Dodson, for your quick, uh, uh, quick work on this and the revision since the last meeting, so just to confirm for citizens who may be, uh, watching from home, the, uh, the option of the, the small attached dog park, uh, has been removed, additional, uh, playground equipment has been suggested and substituted, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, this revised version also includes, uh, the slides off of the existing mounds in the park?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, um, the price of playground equipment is approximately a hundred and forty-one thousand and then another eight thousand for the, um, is it site work or the concrete work?
That will be budgeted separate.
Okay.
And priced out, we're gonna see what kind of footprint we will have and have to work with. Um, the placement of the slide will probably gross a different look into the concrete. Um, so we need to kind of get a, a little bit better idea once we start getting equipment in, and, um, that's when we'll get a price on the, uh, sidewalk around.
Great. Uh, but the version you're proposing tonight is, uh, a hundred and forty-nine thousand total?
Hundred and forty-one.
Okay. Hundred and forty-one.
The total project budget that we had for the equipment was one forty-nine.
Okay.
This contract came back at one forty-one, eight sixty-eight, ninety-eight.
Yes.
Okay.
So under, under that budget.
Great, under budget.
Yes.
We like that. Great. I think it, uh, looks great, the equipment looks great. Other comments, questions? Ms. Wilson?
I know that we discussed last time about removing the dog area. And I think I'm the only one that wanted to see that there, and let me just give you one more plea. Um, with parents bringing their young children and then other people coming over to the playground with older children and maybe their animals, it seems to me that it would be really nice to have a, just a little enclosed space for the dogs to go while the parents were looking after the children, it just seems safer. And, uh, since Adam had proposed it originally, I think that he was in favor of it, so I just wanted to ask, why did we remove it?
Yeah. My understanding of the initial concern is that we didn't want citizens thinking that that was gonna be their new dog park and uh, and, uh, or be concerned that if we did do that, that, you know, we may not invest. Now, we all know at our retreat, we, talking about the dog park, uh, world-class dog park being, uh, the top of our list as far as priorities on, on parks and recreation, so, um, I don't disagree with you, Ms., Ms. Wilson, I think that it is, is a good, you know, it was a good option, but, um, uh, I mean, I think this is a great option also, but I think that's open for discussion, Ms. Schmidt?
Yeah, it wasn't anything personal against, uh, Mr. Dodson's selections or dogs, of which I have had one since I was born. Um, it's just that I'd like to see an agility course like this as part of our world-class dog park that we're working on together as a team. I don't think this was the place for it, I don't think that it's big enough. You can't put multiple dogs in there and throw a tennis ball for them, it's only an agility course. So if I'm in there with my Chihuahua trying to teach it agility and somebody comes in with their lab and wants to throw a tennis ball, that's not, like, it's not really what people who want to go to a dog park are looking for. It would be awesome as part of another dog park where you can go and train your dog on agility, so I'd love us to just keep it in our pocket and put it in our real dog park that we're working on, West Floss.
I wasn't, I wasn't making a plea to, for this to preclude a, a really world-class dog park, I certainly do want that, and I know a lot of our, our, uh, proposed, um, developments have dog parks within them. So this is just for, you know, if, if you bring your little dog and somebody brings a big dog, you get your little dog out. So it's just a convenience.
Not without fighting with each other first.
It's just a convenience, but if, if everybody else wants to take it out, I'm, I'm okay, I was just making one last plea.
Well, I appreciate that, so. Any further comments, suggestions? Additional pleas? Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Motion to approve the park?
Second.
A motion to approve, uh, playground equipment, in a second? Any further discussion, questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed, nay? All members voted for the motion, thank you, Mr. Dodson.
Thank you.
Excited about this. Item D, discussion and possible action to approve the sale of abandoned Hill Street Circle for thirty-five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and authorize a deed to be signed. Mr. Dyer?
Yes, you will recall that, uh, a couple of years ago, we abandoned Hill Street Circle as part of the Academy in Maine, but we had not, uh, deeded it out to anyone, and then in executive session several months ago, we, uh, agreed, or the Harris Group, the owners, that we would abandon it to, or deed it to, uh, asked us to, uh, if we, if they would get an appraisal, if we would sell it to them at that price, so the appraisal's been done, and it comes up to that thirty-five thousand two hundred and fifty. So the vote tonight would be to authorize us to do a deed and authorize the mayor to sign that in exchange for that amount of money. I tried to confirm with the attorney, uh, before the meeting that they would do that, but that was, it was their idea, so I don't have much doubt that they would do it.
I know we originally were talking about that, uh, in conjunction with the project that was proposed for the area that is now withdrawn, so there's not any urgent need to to approve this tonight, if.
Well, I, if, if we're willing to sell it for that amount of money, then they say they don't want to pay that amount of money, then we don't do the deed, so.
Okay, okay. Any questions, comments? Appreciate the information. Moving on, we added, uh, item E to the, uh, old business from, move that from consent agenda, the approval. Approval of HGR proposal for recommended materials and the city plant pallet? Who is, is that, Mr. Peppers? Or Mr. Patton? Someone?
Yes, sir, uh, this is, uh, the proposal in regards to HGR, uh, looking at, uh, the, uh, tree protection section of the Unified Development Code and, uh, suggesting, uh, amendments to the, uh, plant pallet within, uh, the tree protection section. uh, plant pallet within, uh, the tree protection section. There is an amendment with this proposal that was, uh, prepared and included, uh, that was not part of the original proposal to, uh, have H G O R also look at our street corridor, uh, guidelines, uh, that have been adopted, uh, for a number of years. I think those were adopted actually in two thousand and two, if I'm not mistaken. Those street corridor overlay, uh, guidelines do have landscape requirements with overstorey trees, understory trees, uh, shrubs, and, uh, if we're gonna look at the plant pallet altogether, uh, staff thought it would be, uh, a wise move to let them look at, uh, all of the plant materials within the street corridor, uh, and come back with, uh, suggestions, uh, for any amendments, changes. That addition of that street corridor, uh, was an additional two thousand, five hundred dollars on top of the original thirty-five hundred, making, uh, the price for this work from H G O R, six thousand dollars.
So hence the, uh, reason for removing that from the consent agenda, uh, and, and adding it back to old business because not a major change, but it is a change, uh, from what was discussed at the last meeting, so we wanted to be transparent about that and, and, uh, let people know what we're voting on if we voted on that, so. Any questions about that addition?
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, Council members.
Thank you, Mr. Patton.
Moving into new business. A discussion on possi, and possible action on twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three insurance benefits renewal. Ms. Waters.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We really appreciate all the benefits that the council has afforded us over the last few years, especially this year with parental leave and the holidays. What we're proposing after management has met with, uh, M S I benefits broker, which is our current, uh, broker at the time. Mr. Bibble's also here if we have any more in-depth questions that, um, may not can handle. But what we're proposing is moving from Antna Blue Cross Blue Shield to Anthem, uh, excuse me, from Antnum to Aetna. I'll get it backwards here, we got two As going on here. But moving to a high deductible health plan with them, that is a little bit of a change for us, but it is substantial in savings to both the city and them. For example, a family plan would go front, they would see a savings of almost five thousand dollars in a year. Their current payroll deductions for a family plan is three hundred and seventy-five dollars. If we stayed with Anthem, it would be closer to four fifty. By going to Aetna, it will go down to one ninety-one and some change per pay period, which is more appetizing to the employee. It makes it more affordable for them. And I think that's where we would like to see the city go forward, is to be more inclusive of our families, our young families moving in. In addition to moving to Aetna, we would also like to propose adding a H R A, a health reimbursement account for each employee based on the tiers. That would be five hundred dollars for employee only, seven fifty for employing children or employing spouse, and a thousand dollars into this account for a family. That can be used from the, uh, beginning for medical expenses, medical and prescriptions. The employee will have an option to elect, to do an F S A if they would like to a flexible spending account. In addition, another proposal we would like to offer or request is adding a short-term disability policy, uh, paid for by the employer for the employee. The net cost is around twenty-five, twenty-six thousand annually for all full-time employees to be covered. This works hand-in-hand with our parental leave policy, uh, for the reason of short-term disability, you have a fourteen-day waiting period before it will kick in and cover you. So therefore, the parental leave, in a case, uh, that a mother has a baby, then she's covered for those fourteen days or the ten days of that, and then the short-term disability would kick in, so there's a smooth transition there. And it's also very fortunate for other employees to have that, our current employees pay almost that, those few that elect currently. So by doing it as an employer, it's a savings to both the employee and it's a b, added benefit that we feel like. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. Now, those three items, by moving to Aetna, we will be moving the medical, dental, and vision to Aetna as part of a group plan by moving to them. The short-term, long-term, and life will remain with Greater Georgia Life, which is a subsidiary of Anthem. So those that would kind of just stay, we didn't have any increase on that, we've been with them a while. The dental plan with Aetna is a P P O plan, which is very beneficial. Vision, both plans are very complimentary, they're as good if not better. The dental actually affords a orthodontic, a thousand-dollar orthodontic portion to it for adults, not just children, but also adults, which is what's something we didn't have in the past as well.
Okay, thank you. And just, and thank you for all the work, and I know, I know, it's been a lot of, lot of work gone into this, so. I just confirmed that, the, the new benefit, uh, package is being proposed, uh, in addition to the health savings plan and the addition of the short-term disability po, policy. Those combined, uh, are still within the budget that we had budgeted because we had budgeted for an increase, but.
Yes, sir, we normally budget for approximately ten percent increase in our annual premiums. Just the medical alone was a six percent reduction on our current plan, so we've still got that ten percent to play with plus that six percent, so it more than adequately covers both odds.
Okay, great. And I do understand we, we need to take action on this tonight, just to get the enrollment period for March.
Yes, sir, for the ti, the time sensitivity, Aetna likes prefers sixty to ninety days. We already cut them down to about forty-five days. That's to be able to transition to get the cards in the employee's hands so that the plans are ready to get active, readily active as of April one. And we are planning to have mandatory meetings next Tuesday and Wednesday at our police department, as well as one here at City Hall on Tuesday, March first, to be able to go over the different changes, any questions they might have, in addition to some one-on-one enrollment meetings for the next couple of days thereafter with M S I and representative.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Um, I move to approve changing medical, dental, and vision coverage to Aetna, establishing an employer-sponsored H R A for each full-time employee, continue to provide an F S A and provide an employer-paid short-term disability for all full-time employees.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Carlin.
I would just like to commend Ms. Waters and her team, that you've made this easy to understand for somebody who doesn't understand this very well, so thank you for taking the time.
Thank you, sir.
It's been helpful for all of us, I know, to get our questions answered, so we know what we're voting on. Thank you so much.
Making insurance easy to understand is, is, is no small feat, so thank you.
But I do appreciate, and there's always questions, we all have a lot to learn when it comes to insurance.
Yes, indeed.
Oh, and I didn't know, but Aetna does cover all four major health, uh, hospital networks.
Exactly.
So that was.
We know, and we know reasons, the other ones, we had some concern there, so.
Thank you all so much, have a good evening.
Definitely. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Ms. Waters. Moving along, item B, discussion and possible action to grant Georgia Power easements on five parcels for the water pollution control plant. Mr. Otavian?
Yes, as part, as part of the, the plant expansion, Georgia Power has to bring in, uh, new primary feed and a backup feed, and it's, uh, going through five of our parcels, um, so we need five easements, even though we own them all, they're different deeds, so they do them individually. And, uh, the backup will, ultimately eliminated the need for a backup generator, saving about a million dollars on the plant, so.
Awesome. We like saving a million dollars.
Yeah.
We love saving a million dollars, so. Any questions? Comments?
I make a motion to grant Georgia Power easements on five parcels for the water pollution control plant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Otavian. Item C, discussion and possible action on request to terminate contract with Georgia Probation Management, except for the contract with C S R A, Probation Services, Inc. Ms. Fitz?
Hi, Mayor and Council.
Hello.
Hi. Discussion of the action to terminate with Georgia Probation, we need to give them a thirty-day notice, and C S R A said they can start as April first, if it's approved. And there were three changes on the original contract, the judge asked for those. The statute limits us to two hundred probationers, two probation officer. And then he wanted to, uh, talk about taking over the old caseload from Georgia Probation. He wanted them to write something in there that they would take everything, not us have two different companies.
Right, okay. And we had discussed a while back of, of bringing someone in-house, but we, for multiple reasons, that, that didn't happen, so this is, we're still with the same people we were at that time, and this is to go to the new service, correct?
Yes, sir.
Awesome, okay. Any questions, comments? Any motions?
I make a motion to terminate the contract with Georgia Probation and make a new contract with C S R A for probation services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Ms. Fitz. Item D, discussion and possible action on Georgia Power Company Electric Vehicle Charging Make Ready Program Agreement. Mr. Ingram.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
I'm gonna test your memory a little bit, because back early last year, we were starting to approve the construction of the city's new parking, uh, Archer Street Parking Deck. We applied for a E V Make Ready Grant with Georgia Power. What that grant did was, it was a pass-through from the federal government, and it was going to allow Georgia Power, going to prevent Georgia Power, to pay for the laying, the construction of the infrastructure lines, the power lines from the power pole to the charging station. We got approved for that, and the value of that is, and, and my apologies, I don't have that number right in front of me, but the value of that was about eighty to a hundred thousand dollars. What the agreement you have in front of you, and you have my marked-up version, I highlighted some of my notes on it, but what you have in front of you is effectively a glorified easement. See, Georgia Power's gonna own those lines that cross city property. So just like with the water pollution control plant that Mr. Otavian presented a few minutes ago, we have to have an easement that allows Georgia Power, they're gonna, to lay their infrastructure on, within our parking deck, and then to maintain that infrastructure. So although it looks a little concerning, that is effectively all it is, is an easement. Georgia Power is the vendor that's going to lay those in, those infrastructure lines and maintain those lines, and then the city providing that easement. Happy to answer any questions you have, or get some, uh, you know, get some responses back to you if I don't have those answers for you right now.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Mr. Ingram, uh, in terms of the chargers themselves, are we, I assume then we are responsible for maintenance of those chargers?
Yes, sir.
And Georgia Power is responsible for everything before him?
That's a.
So from transformer to, to the, uh, to the charger.
Yes, that's a good question, Mr. Waterman, is, and don't let this confuse, this really has nothing to do with the chargers themselves. The city purchased those chargers and will be required to maintain those. This is for those lines, that infrastructure between the pole and the charger.
Uh, one other question, uh, just looking through the agreement, and we are basically giving Georgia Power, um, rights to our data, our usage data for case studies, their own internal, um, own internal information. So my question is, what will we be able to glean from that information? Will we have access to it? Is there a program involved, um, software that we need to buy?
Well, we'll certainly have the power consumption reports, and I, and I presume that Georgia Power is talking about that information, like how much power is consumed by those charging stations. We'll certainly have, uh, access to that information as well. But these charging stations, if, uh, and Mr. Waterman, you weren't here when this was approved by council, but we had three charging stations. We had a base model, which was just essentially a, a non-network version. We had an upper-tier version, well, we chose the middle version. It does have network capabilities. As of this time, we're gonna make that charging station free to use to all, so we're not gonna have that network. We have that ability, and I would also presume that when we take that ability, we will get those statistics, information from that network, meaning how often they're used, for what hours, what's the power consumption. And when we get that information, we'll have that, those statistics at our, at our fingertips.
I know, you know, we do have, uh, some sustainability goals, and the amount, that data is, is important, that, I know in my, in my world, I, I need data to make decisions, so if we have sustainability goals, um, targets, we need to know how many cars, um, have used, um, the chargers, uh, the amount used, um, and that essentially equates out to, you've, you've taken this amount of energy. You, you're basically avoiding using gasoline, for example. That, those are types of numbers that people want to, want to hear.
Sure, that energy offset.
I would say everyone wants to hear, you know, those that are interested in that, that type of data.
I could, I could see us at some time, maybe sooner rather than later, coming back to council and saying, okay, now, would y'all like to, for five thousand, ten thousand, fifteen thousand, however much that annual cost is to network those? I would, I could see us coming back to council and saying, okay, would y'all like to do this, you know, so that we can get that information to us, you know, and, and put some type of regulations, so, you know, I don't want to scare the public into saying, you know, what we're going to do, but at some point in time, it, there may be a need to say, okay, the first two hours are free, after that, move, you know, just, and that's what a lot of chargers are set up now to do. But right now, at the start, we propose those to be free, and we are not networking those. So right now, at the start, I don't foresee us getting that statistics, but that is a question that I will discuss with Georgia Power. That may be something that we have access to now, and if so, obviously, that'd be good information to have.
Okay, and, and I'm sorry, this is the last one. So that infrastructure that Georgia Power is responsible for does not include data lines, or it's strictly transformer to unit.
That's a good question, Mr. Waterman. I will have to get whether it has the network lines to it. I want to say it does.
I would think if Georgia Power is asking for rights to our, to the data, that it'd be included.
Right, right. So I will almost want to presume it does include network, not just the power lines, the power supplies, the network as well, because those will be ran, or ran in a conduit to the charging station. But that, to, to completely answer that question, I'll have to get back with council. And, and I apologize, I don't know if timing is of the F's, um, Ms. Bethany is not here tonight, but, uh, we were asking for action by council, but regardless whether council is comfortable taking action tonight, I can get that am, answer back to council as soon as possible.
Okay. Further questions, comments?
So you need, you need a motion for, on the Georgia Power Company Electric Vehicle Charging Make Ready Program Agreement? That'll be the approval of.
Can approve, the mayor can sign.
Very good. And this is just the easement piece, but where I get some information about, on that easement piece, what kind of other data may be involved? I'd make a motion to approve, uh, the Make Ready Program Agreement.
E V, E V Make Ready.
Say that again?
E V Make Ready.
E V Make Ready Agreement. Make sure we say it the right way.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motion.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Item E is actually an information item only, uh, it's a staff technical report of, for an upcoming, um, annexation and rezoning request, uh, so we've had these before, this is, uh, was placed on the, uh, new business agenda, but it's just information report, uh, for the next meeting, so, really no discussion, but. Presentation of staff report for annexation and rezoning request for one point one-six acres located at two-ten Butterworth Road for proposed office space. Mr. Green.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you just stated, this is an annexation and rezoning request for the one point one-six acres located at two-ten Butterworth Road. The applicant is requesting, if the property is indeed annexed, to go from R forty, which is a residential zoning in Cherokee County, to O and I, Office Institutional for the purposes of constructing an office building. This property, I believe, will be developed in conjunction with some property that is currently in the city, uh, that is going to be some office and some retail at the northeast corner of Butterworth and Maryetta Highway, right behind the convenience store that is currently there. The applicant has also filed a variance request that will go before the Board of Appeals to re- to reduce the required fifty foot buffer that is required when property within the city limits of Canton abuts property in unincorporated Cherokee County. They're asking for that buffer to be reduced from fifty feet down to forty feet in order to better facilitate an entrance into the property from the curve that is right there in Butterworth. And this will be coming before you folks on the public hearing, I believe it's March the third, yes, March third.
And I would just mention to council that one of the items that was discussed at the retreat was moving variance requests that coincide with an annexation or zoning or master plan to the council to be handled at the same. In this particular instance, the application was filed before we had that discussion, and that's why they're on parallel routes as opposed to simultaneous case.
Thank you.
And I will say that Ken and I are much appreciative of your allowance to have a variance to run concurrently with an application, like Mr. Pepper said, for rezoning and annexation. I think that will help the applicants out greatly, that they will know ahead of time or with the application that their variances will be approved.
We were appreciative for suggestions, so thank you. We, we'll move to the two items that were added to the new business agenda. So item F, discussion and possible action on appointment of interim city clerk for temporary basis. Mr. Peppers.
Just for our, for our audience and for those up here, our city clerk had a beautiful baby earlier this week, and they're healthy and everything, so we're excited about that. I would ask that the council consider naming Ms. Lou Stewart as an interim city clerk so that she can officially file paperwork on behalf of the city and handle those duties until Ms. Fortner gets back.
Okay. We all know Ms. Stewart, and worked with her before, so, yes, we, if you want to take action, we do, we'd need a motion, so.
I'd like to make a motion to have Ms. Lou Stewart take over the interim responsibilities of city clerk.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. And then item G, discussion and possible action on legislative action to approve the new charter as amended?
And if you'll bear with me, I want to give some background, because it sounds bad to say it's a new charter, so. And I, and I use that word, and that's not, that's not really accurate.
Thank you, because I wrote that down, so like, you use a lot of words, but I just.
I said the word new, and then I realized, whoa, that sounds like a new charter. So what we have right now, we've been operating under a charter that was adopted in 2005. Prior to that, the charter was done in 1922, and had been amended a bunch. And the last amendments have been in the sixties and seventies. So it needed to be modernized. The, unfortunately, in 2005, the city council approved it, but it did not go to the legislature. So what that left us with was changes made that were allowed under the home rule power would be valid, changes made to election stuff were not properly done. The election stuff was the reason they needed to do a new one, because the twenty-two charter was way out of date, and so they were modernizing the election stuff. So we've been operating under that, and we've all, I think, had in mind that eventually we needed to take the charter back to the legislature for approval of the whole thing to kind of catch us up. So last year, we went through the charter revision process for the things we could do under home rule and adopted those. So this proposed charter is all those changes, plus what already existed. And it includes five changes that the city council could not do under home rule, and has to be done by the legislature for election stuff. But it, one thing I want to make clear is, there's a whole lot of stuff in there about elections that were already adopted, but it needed to be adopted by the legislature as well. So from the legislature's point of view, there's a lot that's new. But this is the charter that we are, we have approved and been living with since 2005 with, and I'll just read these out or describe them. There's a change to 2.13A dealing with filling vacancies and a council member of vacancy. So we did not have anything in the charter that said it's vacant if you don't live there anymore. So we added residency as a act of vacancy, just to make that clear. Then the other part of that section was the filling of vacancies, and we proposing to add a, that a appointment can be made to fill out the remaining term unless there was a general election before that. And if there was a general election, then the special election would be held in conjunction with that. There, I saw in the AJC, I don't remember which city it was, but they were discussing making similar changes, because nobody wants to do a special election. It costs too much money. If you'll recall, we let some seats vacant, so this proposal, the committee had, at the time, thought it was a change to do what we really want to do, and which we actually did. So, but with the general election, then we would be bearing the cost of that election anyway, and so you could run a special election with it. As I was going through it, I did note one thing that's, we could have done by home rule, but failed to do. So we had a section that said the municipal court could be convened at times as established by ordinance. We don't, we never had an ordinance to do that. So I'm proposing we change that to as set by the municipal court judge and approved by the city council, which I think keeps us from having to, again, worry about changing ordinances when something happens. So that was one, you could have done it by home rule, but I thought now we'll just do it and have the legislature do it. The third change was, or the fourth one, was just to delete references to the municipal election code. That's an old outdated thing that hasn't been in the statute for twenty, twenty-five years. The big change, and the thing that we really needed to do, was make it clear that we're going to have elections by majority, not plurality. That plurality thing had been added in 2005, so I had taken the position that that was invalidly done, that they could not have done that in 2005. So the other provision, which dealt with majority controlled. And so now we're cleaning that up and making it clear that it's majority. And then the last change was just making the special election provision match the change we're making about filling vacancies. So it just says any special election would be held according to law. So with those five or six changes, we would be sending to the legislature a complete charter for them to enact it, which is the charter we have with these additional few things that need to be done. And it would just catch us up and end this lingering issue about the 2005 charter.
Thank you, Mr. Dyer. So we, when we did the changes, approved the changes by home rule, you'd mentioned that we'd have to come back and do the, discuss the legislative, legislative changes that had to be approved. These are all of those, so there aren't any others, additionals after these, I mean, at this time?
Correct.
Okay, good, thank you.
This is going from the thing we've had since 2005. Those changes are actually legally being changed.
Correct.
But we've been living with them.
Right, exactly, exactly, so.
Seventeen, eighteen years, so.
Great, it'll be nice to have a legal charter, so.
Won't it be nice?
Yes. Great, thank you.
How do you need your motion for?
It's just to adopt the resolution, because all we're doing is asking the local delegation to undertake it.
Further questions, comments, motions?
Mr. Dyer? I'd make a motion to adopt the resolution of the City of Canton, Georgia to support and request local election, or local legislation to enact a new charter to incorporate changes made by home rules and changes to be made by the legislature, so.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion, so.
And the resolution was, I prepared it because I don't, I'm not aware of the local delegation having any new rules, that they wanted to be signed by everybody, to make it clear it was unanimous. That's the way they used to do it, and I thought it was safe to go ahead and do that. So you'll all need to sign that resolution, and Ms. Stewart would like you to do that tonight.
Okay. So no one leaves to sign that, so we'll get that done tonight, and again, I want to thank the committee that worked on that and council for discussing all those items, and Mr. Dyer for his guidance on that. Again, it's something, work that's been, needed to be done for years, and I want to thank this council for getting it done, so. We had no council introduced items, just double checking again. So Mr. Peppers?
Just a couple of things. Mr. Dyer is passing this out, I'll email it to you as well. This is something new we're going to be doing with all cases that come before you for public hearings. You'll note that I've highlighted at the top that this is the Park Village Master Plan. We had an application that came in the first of March for a master plan amendment at Park Village. This is the calendar or the schedule that case will follow, and we have highlighted the dates of public meetings, we've highlighted the dates when they have to have certain things on their end as the applicant. We'll be providing one of these on all cases that come forward in the future. That way, it's clear to you when a case comes up, if a citizen asks a question, you can, you can tell them where it's at in the process. We're also giving this to the applicant, so they remember what their dates are and when their due dates are. Ms. Brittany Anderson put that together, and I wanted to, I wanted to share that one with you tonight, because it's the first one that we have, and to let you know that we had an application for a master plan amendment at Park Village that will come before you in April.
That's great, thank you.
The second item I have is an item that was discussed at the retreat, and I just want to read it into the record. This is a letter correspondence from the city back to Cherokee County. As you recall, Cherokee County came and did a presentation at our last meeting about their potential options on their parking deck. So this is a letter from me directly to the county manager, Mr. Morton. It is dated for today, and I will, I will make sure that he gets a copy of it before I leave the building tonight. Says, "Mr. Morton, the City of Canton appreciates the presentation from Cherokee County Board of Commissioners at the City Council Meeting on February third, 2022 regarding the proposed Cherokee County Judicial Center Parking Deck. As noted at the meeting, the City Council would discuss the presentation at its winter retreat held this past weekend. As a result of those discussions, I'm sending this communication to you. The city would prefer that Cherokee County utilize property that it currently owns in downtown Canton for the parking deck and for future courthouse expansions. By limiting its footprint, Cherokee County assists the City of Canton in growing both residential and commercial investment opportunities in the future. The option presented on February third would add another two-plus acres to the existing fourteen-plus acres controlled by the county within downtown, displaces downtown residents, and removes property that can lead to private investment, further improving the local economy. Canton is hopeful that Cherokee County can build both the necessary parking facility and annex on property currently controlled by the Board of Commissioners. Please pass this letter along to your elected officials. Regards and I will sign underneath." But I did want to get that in the record, so that you've had a chance to hear it publicly and before we send it out to the county. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on this or any other number of items. We've talked about a lot of them since the retreat.
Any questions for Mr. Peppers?
Ms. McGrew.
Mr. Peppers, you touched briefly on the part where we discussed at the retreat to change the planning and zoning and the variance board process when something comes together. And it makes very good sense to do that, streamline it for the applicant. Do we need to do a resolution or a vote to approve that change in procedure?
It'll be coming to you as a, as a item. We'll put it on the March agenda, but it will come forward at the second meeting for approval, because we'll have to have a public hearing for it.
Any further questions? I know we, Mr. Peppers had plenty of questions over the weekend, so. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple items this evening. One is, is to kind of realign our existing council committees that we kind of created, I've kind of created primary council committees prior to the creation and adoption of our roadmap for success, and so I wanted to realign those and create some new council initiatives and have our council members head up these initiatives that we discussed in the retreat that would align with our tenants in the roadmap. So for 2022, those initiatives would be sustainability, and that would be the initiative be chaired by Council McGrew. Infrastructure chaired by Ms. Wilson. Diversity inclusion chaired by Mr. Carlin. Housing continued to be chaired by Mr. Tolan. Economic development continued to be chaired by Ms. Schmidt. And then a new initiative for parks and recreation chaired by Mr. Waterman. So those are the initiatives that will, council will be focusing on the highest level for 2022. Also wanted to officially point Council Dwayne Waterman to the sanitation committee. We had an opening from former Counselor Nick Estes was on that committee. So we wanted to fill his place with Mr. Waterman, so congratulations, Mr. Waters. And then I wanted to mention, we discussed this at our retreat, and it's something we're excited about, is that we, we are planning to hold a joint meeting and work session with all of our citizens' boards and commissions and in, sometimes around mid-March and the mid to late March at the Canton Theater, depending on when we can get availability there. So we're going to really kind of discuss all of our initiatives and things that we discussed at the retreat, and talk about a roadmap and goals and how we can all work better together, and how we kind of communicate our priorities back and forth, and really kind of discuss, you know, expectations with our boards and commissions and how we can all, all work together in a more productive manner to accomplish all the goals. And there are a lot that we're trying to accomplish. So we look forward to that meeting and that interchange. I think it's the first time in the city's history that we've ever had a meeting like this, and so we really appreciate our boards and commissions, and so we look forward to having that meeting with them in March, and so we'll get that date confirmed, and we'll, we'll send that out to all of our boards and commissions, and we'll get some good clarity on that, and look forward to that initiative going forward. I think the only thing I had left, I just, I wanted to, to thank our city council and our city manager for a wonderful retreat this past weekend. It was, I think, probably the most productive retreat I've been to in a while, and I think this council's been too, and I want to thank you for showing up and doing the hard work and discussing all the great goals we have for this year and beyond, but it was great work, I'm excited about it. I know my head's still spinning, and I know Mr. Peppers' head's still spinning also, so. I've been waking up every night thinking about all these things, but look forward to getting, continue our great work. Gave the state of the city the last meeting, and, you know, that list was very long, and the list of accomplishments is going to continue to grow, but I think as we continue to hone our focus on our initiatives, I just get more excited every day of what we're accomplishing, and then, and again, that's only possible without, with, with the work of this team and the collaboration, so thank you very much, so. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion to adjourn and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted to adjourn. We are now adjourned.